Good evening, we call to order the Letherton Village City Council of Monday, March the sixth. And I will ask the clerk to call roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Kenez.
Here.
Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, I invite everyone that is in the audience and one person on Zoom to say that uh let the police.
I believe.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation under God, with the good soul, liberty and justice for all. So I know that we have quite a bit of agenda adjustments. So before the approval, can we go ahead and do all the changes that we need to do for the agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to first move the closed session from action item F to just after the consent agenda. Also move to change or add a new item F. It would be action on the labor attorney recommendation. And then the third adjustment would be move the appointment to the board of review out of the consent agenda and email and make it a new action request G. Cause that should be an actual request, not a continuing consent agenda. And lastly, to remove the ZBA portion of tonight's meeting.
I have a second thing before you go, so we're going to make sure, just to repeat this.
So move the closed session to after the consent agenda.
So we're moving the closed session from item number F to. Wait a minute.
To nine point five.
Nine point five, okay, I see it, so. Got it, so close session is going to be moved to. Nine point.
Five.
What, where's the point five?
No, I'm saying make it nine point five.
Or what you could do since you're removing seven, you could just.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
Makes it extra difficult, okay, so that's the first thing that we're changing.
And then make a new action item F.
Okay.
Which would be action on the labor attorney recommendation. And then.
Okay.
Then pull the. Appointment of the border of review out of the consent agenda and make that an item G in the action requests.
Okay.
And then remove the ZBA portion of tonight's meeting.
Please, ZBA is.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I think there was one more that needed to be.
I think that was it.
Now, we have one more that needs to be taken out, is it not on here? The Alliance Employee Assistance Program.
Yes, they are not going to be able to make it today, so.
Oh, add that into my motion.
So, here I go trying to repeat it, so for the approval, we're looking for a second on moving the. Board of Review appointment to be letter G, changing the closed session to letter. No, sorry. Oh yeah, changing the closed session to be the first on the list for the action request. And then for the last item under action request will be the Labor Attorney General's action. And removing zoning Board of Appeals, is that correct?
Say one more time.
We're going to go into the closed session at the beginning of the action requests. Just prior to the actual request, sorry. Everyone have that. Is there a second? Second. Move in the second. Uh, robot.
Councilmember Jennings.
No. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez. Yes. Councilmember Miller. Mayor Garrett.
Uh, so that's a group of the correct, so first up is the proclamation for recognizing the one hundredth birthday. Of Julia. Harvey. Anyone, nope, no one's here for it. So, uh. One, just to quickly go through this is that Ms. Harvey was born in Sydney, Mississippi on February twenty third nineteen twenty three. Then moved to Michigan in nineteen forty five. Um, and she has been a resident of Letherton Village since two thousand and five. And the United States has the greatest number of centenarians in the world. And on the twenty third, Ms. Harvey was honored for a hundred years on this earth. And now therefore being proclaimed that I might tell Garrett Mayor of the City of Letherton Village, not the cap of the city council and the citizens of Letherton Village. Honor Ms. Harvey for her long life and prosperity and wish her many more. And this was on the twenty third day of February. Sorry, I don't have mine, okay, so the first up is. Presentation.
Nope. I can't see. Presentation.
Oh yeah, the presentation, oh, you do what you do, so. Thank you.
Mayor Council, you have two thousand and fifteen annual report. For a couple of months, but you want me to go over through some pages, we can do that. Page two is kind of a flow chart of our. Department breakdown, officers and reserves. Page three is a list of all the training we've done throughout the year. That tells you how many people has gone, it's one of those trains. And then we, we kind of break that training down so you can see like a larger group, legal update, firearms, mental health, police support, leadership. We try to break it down so you can see what we go through throughout the year. We'll move into the part A and part B prize. There is a breakdown to two thousand and twenty one, twenty two, and you can see that there is a slight uptick. In a prime from part A and part B. There's a definition of those listed on this page. If you go over to the next page, it actually does a five year average. So if you look at the actual five years, pretty flat numbers. Obviously, we had a drop during COVID from nineteen twenty twenty one. Twenty two numbers are just about equal in the seat. Next page, both were call for service. They are holding up, but I think we're also doing a better job of documenting what they do throughout their, throughout their day. So when they're doing things, they're always pulling numbers to make sure that they're getting credit for everything that they do on the show. And also encompasses accidents. And it's pretty flat throughout the five year average. We had no fatalities of accident business. And then. There's a ticket summary down at the bottom. And then the following page will actually have a seniority list of all the employees that we have here, how much time they have engraved here at the department as well as other departments they work at.
Can you, can you, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my bearings, can you go back to the, you said the ticket overview?
So yeah, second to the last page is a ticket summary. And it's just an overall crap violations, motor carrier violations.
Okay.
Five year.
Okay, thank you.
Did the, did the motor carrier look like it dropped them in half, was that just happen, happenstance or?
Off the back of retired and.
Ah, got it. Cause I know those are pretty lucrative from, from a perspective of revenue. Yeah.
That's on the agenda, just that still, we do have the train classes come out for more period in May.
Speaking of lucrative, um, do we have data on what all of this comes out to in revenue for the city?
I don't have anything here, we can get a printout from court. Because the ticket revenue broke out between the state court and then the city.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that's something I could definitely look at.
Okay. For future, that'd be great, thank you.
Anything else?
I do have a question. And it's only because I, I found out about it. And I think that's something that we as a council have to think about is when someone has to use their personal phone for a city. Uh, business. Try to figure out a way of reimbursement, Teresa had used her phone while we had the phones around.
Yes.
And I was just trying to figure out if there's a way to reimburse for using her phone. Or saying that, I mean, I'm not really sure how the calls came through, but I'm assuming that she got the non emergency calls.
Right now, I'm getting the.
Okay.
So I have a department cell phone.
Okay.
Also, yeah, it's just taking care of business when we do it.
Okay, well then.
We're, we're trying to re, we're trying to reroute that, the non emergency call like that when the lines are down, we're trying to get it routed over to the Southwood Dispatch.
Okay.
So that way, if I'm at home, it's just prolonging the one step, or if we can just get it routed to Southwood Dispatch and get that.
Absolutely, okay. Anyone have anything else? Thank you, change.
Oh, thank you chief for coming to report on this, since we did, we did harass you for it, thank you.
I did not.
Jalen.
Next up, we have the twenty twenty two downtown development authorities annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. I too am here to present the DDA's twenty twenty two annual reports. And providing synopsis of all of the wonderful things that we're able to accomplish. But I believe you all have a copy of the annual report from at least a month ago. And just to really highlight, you know, for benefit of those that may be listening at home or watching us on Facebook. The DDA was formed in nineteen ninety eight, founded in ninety nine. Um, and the mission of the DDA is to undertake public improvements that have the greatest impact as thanks to the downtown area and attract new investments. And so we do that by leveraging our public and private dollars for the benefit primarily of the business district, which runs from Lincoln to twelve mile and. Along twelve miles and have been along the eleven mile service drive. So we are, our board is the, the nine mayor board. Okay, a nine person board, including the mayor and eight appointees who are here. We've got our chair, Fred Prime is here, and also our, our secretary Pam Schermeier. Both presidents of the city of Letherton Village, we have staff, myself, Brittany Dorsey and Ambra Chee. As you can see in the report, our annual budget revenues are, are typically are spreadled, spreadled the calendar year in your city. Starting July one, so our revenues have been budgeted around three hundred and fifty thousand to last, uh, last year, this year and three hundred and fifty for last year. We are, you can see we are planning and funding this year. Um, in twenty twenty three, we will be getting into our financials and see is at approximately one point four million dollars. We have been saving those funds since the inception of the DDA specifically to make infrastructure improvements for Southfield Road. And though some of those activities are what we've accomplished this year. We have as a whole experienced transition in twenty twenty two. Uh, we, our previous DDA manager took another position, we were able to find another very, very capable individual in Brittany Dorsey. And she had, I put a lot of effort into helping the DDA continue to host events throughout last year. We had over twenty community events, these are social individual DDA events as well as events in which we partner. Uh, we've had more than two thousand attendees at all of these events. Um, a hundred and twenty six volunteers and over seventy volunteer hours. So, um, that is wonderful and we continue to grow and expand our reach into the business district and community as a whole. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing the twenty twenty three numbers, jumps significantly there. Some of the accomplishments I'd like to hire, hi, I like, sorry, are the street shaping project, which have included the hanging baskets and. Re, redoing the different flower, flower pots and flower beds. We've also had two informational meetings, which are statutory requirement of public act fifty seven, which is what guides the DDA and other taxing authority. Uh, so those meetings were held in on, on audit court and again on December sixteenth. Uh, we had approximately twenty of those, twenty individuals present. Our infrastructure improvements have been very large, the DDA. Paid for installation of sidewalks both along Southfield Road and along twelve mile roads within the district. Uh, we also have undertaken, well, and then amounts to just for numbers, they fifteen thousand lineal feet of sidewalk along, along twelve mile road. Um, and I don't know if anyone had the pleasure of, I think, first nodding his head, yeah, that was like a funky stretch, you know, yeah. There was eight inches of asphalt underneath there, so dramatic improvement for those, those sidewalks up there. Uh, DDA has also undertaken an alley establishment. Uh, to really make some strategic improvements to the alleyways and the approaches. So we have a five year plan to complete a whole lot of work. We have in twenty twenty two, we repaired six alley approaches and one alley. Uh, we have. Planned at least two alleyways and adjacent approaches for twenty twenty three. Um, and lastly, we are, we've been given the go ahead by the road commission to proceed with installing a, a hot signal, pedestrian activated signal. Uh, along across Southfield Road near Margate Avenue. And we are working with HRC to design, design that, that safety feature. So we're excited, we're cautiously optimistic that we'll get that and sell by the end of the year, but if not into twenty twenty four. Um, and that's the, the funding for those infrastructure and specifically are from the fund balance, which again is something that we've been. Building and saving specifically for these kinds of activities. Uh, our work is not so limited to just infrastructure, however, we've also had several events and promotional campaigns, including trunk or treat, which saw. An insanely wonderful turnout of some very, very happy, over two hundred attendees. Um, and that event had included music, candy, candy casting contest and so much more. Um, we've expanded our Southfield Road Board or cleanup. And we have officially adopted Southfield Road from the road commission for that endeavor. Um, we're working to build our volunteer base for that and having our own satisfied cleanup crew. Uh, we've also partnered with the Letherton Village Community Foundation on their summer concert series. We are expecting to do so again this year, and we're working with them already on scheduling and future marketing for that. We've had, we've also hosted our second annual and twelfth celebration on June eighteenth of twenty twenty two. Uh, this is an event that is continued to grow and receive attention at each year as you had it. I will be in the third Saturday. So we're looking forward to continuing that celebration. We've also again had our shop mall, our winter artisan market this year. Uh, it was an event that is now in our third year, we did have a brief hiatus during COVID. But we continue to grow this event each year, I was more and more vendors and attendees, we're continually looking for. Um, finding the eighteen gauge are the makers of Letherton Village. Um, and lastly, we implemented a new adopter senior program in partnership with the police department. We had originally partnered with the Voice Ten Youth Foundation, the local nonprofit Letherton Village. Um, helped provide job training, life skills. The Voice are participating in this program. After speaking with the police department and their, their needs for the adopt a senior program, we said this is a better partnership. And so those boys were able to. Were, were able to help seniors in Letherton Village that do not necessarily have a support network, they were able to get support through those boys. Um, and they were doing. Light yard work, helping them clean around, clean around their yard. So it was generally very, very well received and we're looking forward to continuing that program again into twenty twenty. Three and, and, and expanding it to. So, all in all, the DDA is quite happy with the things that we were able to accomplish this year. Uh, we're, we're really excited about the momentum that we're, we're building and we're looking forward to make another exciting. Thank you.
Question. So can you speak to why the police didn't just ask voice to men to work with them?
I.
I know they want to take it back, but can you speak to that?
It was, um. I don't know, it was a matter of not asking the police, but it was a conversation that the DDA had already done with. For. For, we had, we had great designs of, of having those boys help us maintain the flower heads and, and help in that way. And it was just after having those conversations with voice fans leadership, that you know, I had to simply. And they're adopting senior programs to benefit from your, from your, your voice instead of the media. So we, we form that. We give them that help and get your questions.
I'll, I'll talk to you offline. Um, also, I wanted to know, will we get like a, like a overview or renderings of the hawk process of how that will look or?
Yes, once I have that information, I will very excited to be sure that was.
Okay.
But yeah, and we have, we have not yet even gotten.
I'm understanding.
Very, very early in that.
Understood.
Yes, I will absolutely share all of that.
Okay, uh, two more questions. Okay, so I wanted to make sure, I know you guys talked about like the hanging basket thing process, you know how Bruce has that issue over the summer? Is that gonna be?
It was never got resolved.
This go around.
Now, it just needed to be turned a hundred and eighty degrees.
Sorry. Yeah, that will, that will be.
Thank you. Oh, last question, okay, so. You know, like. Um, so the banners, right?
Yeah.
Do you guys have plans to update the banners?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're spreading our street love, love out a little bit over the year, but yes, for over the year.
Okay.
So yes, we are painting, guys, uh, new banners, actually with our new, um, our, our wonderful new brand that we worked on last year.
Okay.
In twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we are painting, getting the banner.
Only reason I asked you, because the welcome banner doesn't say like to really join it, it just says welcome and I, I had it with that. So, but it was a great banner overall, I just wish it had the city name on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
Just wanted to make a comment, I think Scott and Suzie for coming and doing that, it was my request that. Uh, annual reports be presented to the residents so that people know what's going on, that was very helpful, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't have the zoning board of appeals, so we'll skip right down to public comments for items on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and again, this is items that's on the agenda stuff. Statements, anyone in the audience? Anyone online? That would like to speak for three minutes for items on the.
Madam Mayor, I'm just maybe ask the audience if this was noticed for a public hearing for the DVA, so if anyone is here for that.
Is anyone?
Okay.
Okay, well then, we'll skip down to the consent agenda, we already pulled out D. Is there anything else that needs to be put up? Mary?
Yes. I'd like to pull E.
Okay. Anything else? It is E.
I don't, I don't think she has another one, that's all.
Any outside?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with pulling item E out.
Second.
It's been moving second, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Well, she carried, thank you.
So because the, the is actually going to be action items, we'll skip right down to the February twenty twenty three. The, this first.
This first.
Okay, um, and just FYI, our city manager is out and some means for the rest of the week. So, um, hopefully we'll be able to answer all these questions if not, sorry, January twenty twenty three is that, well, people, I apologize. Um, hopefully we'll be able to answer the questions, if not, can we just make sure that they are repeated at the next meeting and answer.
But, okay, just get fifty one. Uh, Intel, Intelliant X, Inc., self-service portal, six hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventy five cents, I don't remember seeing that before, but maybe it has them on there.
Under government services.
Yes, government operations, yes.
I will have to get back with you on that.
Okay, and also, um, under government operations, the, the, um. There's a jagged fork in Markley for the SAKMA dinner, no, no, that was something that we attended, I just. Um, I'm wondering what. I couldn't find any information on SAKMA, Mark, this is the first, that was the first time I had heard of it, the United City Council for a year and a half, so I'm just wondering what the organization is. There was something that said there were other communities that were co-sponsoring, so will we be reimbursed for some of that money? Um, what is this, what does it look like?
So which question would you like me to answer first?
Um. All of them.
Okay, so. South Oakland, uh, it's South Oakland Mayor's Association, so it's only for mayors in South Oakland County. Um, I forgot when it first started, but, um. I'm sure there's something, so South Oakland County Mayor's Association, if you look it up, it should be.
Look it up, there wasn't anything, I think.
For South Oakland. Um. So, um, as long for the twelve years that I've been on council, uh, the previous mayor always intended it, I intended it in his place. Um, unfortunately, and I knew this was going to come up, the SAKMA dinner was supposed to be split between. Uh, us and other communities, and I did not know it wasn't split until I saw it on here.
Okay.
Um, and so my understanding is that we are waiting for reimbursement from the other communities.
Okay.
And that is the honorarium for the actual speaker, um, for the dinner.
And mayor usually when, um, in the past on these, uh, or the mayor dinners, they have the city that is hosting it, pays it upfront, and then we get reimbursed.
Oh, okay, so it is.
Yeah.
We like that, okay, so thank you.
On here.
Okay.
Um, and so my understanding is that we are waiting for reimbursement from the other communities. And that is the honorarium for the actual speaker, um, for the dinner.
And mayor usually when, um, in the past on these, uh, Aqua or the mayor dinners. They have the city that is hosting it pays it upfront and then we get reimbursed.
Okay, so it is.
Yep.
But that was my question also.
Yes.
And how do you, does the group meet monthly or how often do you meet?
It meets every Monday, every Monday, sorry, every month, we meet the third Wednesday of every month. Um, if the mayor can't go, then the mayor pro tem, um, goes in the mayor's place. If the city is, if the. Whoever's hosting the mayor, whoever's hosting the meeting, the entire council goes for that particular city.
Correct.
And this is the first time we hosted?
Absolutely not, so we were supposed to have one in. Uh, I wanna say it was. January, not this past January, because we missed one, it was the last July or June. Somewhere we missed one where we were supposed to host, we hosted one, um, because it rotates through all of the cities. We normally, which I don't think it's there anymore, we hosted at Big Rock at least. Three times since I've been on council.
Yeah, also at the Prudential Town Center, we had one.
No, where we hosted, because we were supposed to host at the mint. Um, and then two at, two or three at Big Rock, and then this will be Daniel Ford, the fifth one. And I can't remember, but most of the times we partner with, uh, Birmingham and we'll go to Big Rock.
And, um, what organizations or, or cities are part of, I think Northville was that, that one?
Um. All of Oakland County.
No, it's not, it's Wayne, and I forgot why they were there, um. I forgot, I don't know, you would have to ask that, and so it's supposed to be on the mirrors of South Oakland County, so I don't know why.
He probably just got invited or something.
It is happening, happening.
I forget, thank you for. But I can find the, uh, list, I think I have a list of all the cities and I can, uh. Send it to you.
Be great, thanks.
You're welcome, any other questions?
Um, yes. It's actually.
Actually, before you go, let's catch up, so if you want me to tell you, it is Berkeley, Berkeley Hills, Birmingham, Lawson, Farmington, Farmington Hills. Burndale, Hazel Park, Huntington Woods, Madison Heights, Northville, that's why they were there, okay, the Oakland County side. Novi, Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Royal Oak, Royal Oak Township, South Hill, South Alliance, Troy. And with. I haven't, sorry.
Um, there is a. I guess it's page two of two. Uh, item ninety. Um, just so that we see that we have multiple correspondence from councilwoman, well, does that mean that those are? Um, emails that I sent to you Stan or other people or how, how does that, how that work? Because I couldn't find. Multiple emails.
Those would be, those would be any emails that were sent, and this is, you're referencing the retainer section, which is, um. It's just an accounting of time spent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to find what.
Imagine, that's I just asking for an example because of.
Yeah, so if it's. Yeah, if it's just if there's like a, a back and forth and I'm copied on it, I'll note it, just usually say we see multiple. If I, if I don't respond, uh, if it requires some sort of special action or time that it won't show up on there, but if it's just receiving. That's typically.
Okay, but that means something that I sent you.
Correct, or like if you send something to the mayor and copy me on it.
Right.
Then I would, then I would know that.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, under prosecution's order enforcement. There's a receipt review and respond to correspondence from quality towing attorneys. Telephone conference would same remotion to wash subpoena.
Correct, there was an issue, uh, there was this traffic crash where, uh, place, the police department impounded a, uh. Vehicle, the driver of that vehicle, actually both, both the vehicles were damaged. Keep maybe aware of this, but, uh, both the vehicles are damaged or un, undrivable, so quality towing took both those and impounded them. Uh, the appalled driver was issued a civil infraction for their role in the accident. The, that individual's attorney, but, uh, served a subpoena not only on quality towing, but also on, uh, Sergeant Zhang. Um, to turn over block box information for that vehicle. Because it's a, a civil infraction, there's no subpoena power in a district court case, so we had to respond to that and communicate with their, their attorneys. Uh, on that procedure.
Okay, thank you. And then last thing is, um. This budget report revenue versus expense first month, month ended January, this is just from twenty twenty three. We have, um, revenue through January thirty first of six million four hundred fifty nine thousand. Six hundred fifty nine dollars and we have expenses of eight million one hundred twelve thousand seven hundred fifty four dollars, which, uh. With a difference of negative one million six hundred fifty three thousand ninety five dollars. That because, um, funds haven't been reimbursed yet.
That's all, that is all the funds that are there. And if you look, we don't have all of our major and local, we are two months behind, I made your local revenue coming in. Um, for, or major and local, yeah, revenue coming in. Um, capital acquisition. That was transferred here in February, so you probably will not see that till February, that the money was transferred there.
Okay.
For that one, um, roads, we don't, we're not taking anything, you know, revenue that's coming in there is just the interest that's coming in for the roads. And DDA, um, they have not gotten all their money yet for their revenue for the taxes and that, so.
Okay.
And that will be coming in as soon as I settle with the county on the, um, taxes, so.
And then the water and sewer fund.
And that will be water and sewer fund, we still are getting money in there and plus, there's gonna be a transfer of money coming in from the bonds. Which has not been put in there yet.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty twenty three distribution report.
Second.
Then move the second is, there's no, uh, oh yeah, any further discussion?
No, no.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor. Motion carried.
Thank you. So if I'm reading my list right, we're gonna now, um. Off our rope up, do a, uh, motion to close and go into a closed door session. So.
Correct, and I, and I just ask that whoever makes the motion include the specifics that we're going. Into closed section pursuant to section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss a written, uh, attorney-client correspondence from the city.
Is that eight H?
Eight H from the city's labor attorney. Alright, so I'll make a motion, uh, to close the, uh, council meeting and move into closed session pursuant to, uh. Item eight H of the Open Meetings Act to discuss a, uh, written action from the city's labor attorney.
Have a second?
Second.
They moved in second. We have to do a roll call, we just.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, we will be.
Action tank, um. Oh, start over. This is to bring up our, um, retention tank up to, um, that the, um, Oakland County are, they're going to be using it. For the Evergreen Farmington to, um, help with the flow of things going down to the Everte, Ever, Evergreen Farmington. And we have, um. Members here from Oakland County that will be able to answer any questions you have, they probably have more information on it than I do, they can help out with anything that. Else that you might need. And so if you'd like to, you can go to that computer right there and talk.
Thank you, um, one, can I have a motion to accept the sanitary retention tank cost sharing agreement?
Motion to approve the cost sharing agreement for the sanitary retention tank project between the Evergreen Farmington Sanitary Drang. Uh, Commission District and the city of Lethal Village.
Second.
It's moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of points, um, just to be clear or to be, to be specific, the money from this is coming out of the capital improvement bond. Um, we had originally, uh, off, probably four, almost, well, three and a half years ago, uh, we estimated about five hundred thousand dollars. For that, it turns out that it's gonna be about eight hundred and fifty eight thousand, um, which the capital improvement bond can still very easily cover, which is something that I'll talk about a little bit. Uh, later when we get into the study group recommendation, but we are, um. Uh, dramatically under budget, uh, for the capital improvement bond, and so this, this money can very easily be absorbed, uh, from the capital improvement bond.
That was only two years ago.
Well, when we started talking about it and put the estimates together.
Yeah, December twenty one, twenty twenty. What, what's the, what, why the big jump from five hundred thousand to eight hundred and fifty eight thousand?
It was an estimate at the time of what we thought needed to be done and then, then, you know, now, two and a half years later, they're, they're. Into the more specific estimate and, and they can probably talk more about that than you. I can.
The original cost was based off of, uh, engineers estimate, and then we waited and then we got the cost from the contractors. And what we've been seeing across the board is, is, um, higher costs for the trucking that we had to send the last.
Okay, I mean, a lot, was, was the estimate off or?
No, the estimate wasn't off, it's just that the price.
It's gone up that much, okay.
Okay, that's why we waited until we actually had actual costs instead of coming to you.
So who, can you guys hear like who's the? Who you guys are working?
The bidder is a company called Midwest Power Systems.
Okay, where the, where are they based?
They're based off of Milford, right?
Correct.
We're the lowest responsible bidder, I believe we had four bids. Um, and they range, they were from about two point two to. I want to say six million was the highest.
Okay.
They were, it was a big range.
And I assume we've checked references and everything.
So in the document, it says the. Project includes mechanical HVAC building, electrical and instrumentation replacement or repairs, so who would be responsible for those?
The contractor will be doing all the work. Oakland County, the university will be overseeing it.
Okay.
Her engineers, um, we received her design work and they'll be involved.
Okay, so they will be the ones doing like, if we ever have repairs, Oakland County will be doing.
Um. Um, so that's another.
Um, so as far as the agreement goes with the cross sharing, um. So, Laidra Village is under an administrative consent order with the state of Michigan to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows during large term events from this facility. In addition, Evergreen Farmington is under a similar administrative consent order for overflow on eight mile. So us coming together, we can build one project that solves both of our problems. Um, and so this is really a great solution for our region and what it does for Laidra, so things like HVAC. And any type of improvement to the facility itself, um, is going to be borne by the village, uh, Laidra Village moving forward, so. Um, anything that is increased in order to push additional head to the Evergreen Farmington, because that's what we're doing, we're causing a higher. Pressure for you to push against when you discharge. Um, is gonna be borne by Evergreen Farmington today for the initial capital improvement, so some electrical upgrades, some pump station. But what this agreement does is moving forward, the village, this, uh, city of Lethal Village will still own this facility. All assets within the facility are still listed as being owned, um, by the city of Lethal Village, so there will be no transfer of ownership. So you will still, will pay for this initial upfront cost. Um, as part of that, you're getting an additional six CFS of capacity in our system, which you desperately needed. That way you don't have to actually upsize this facility or do some INI removal in your system. And as that trade off, we're getting this additional grade separation as part of the project.
That puts us up to about ten right now.
I don't know the number off, and I can look that up.
Does the school leak, uh, have any impact on this? I'm not aware of the leak.
We did check with retention tank and ransom cows, we figured one of these stores.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And we're gonna double check that if spring was pretty dry out.
Okay, and then I also thought I saw, uh, public, on the public records for Oakland County, I thought showed Oakland County as the owner of the retention tank. That.
They, they do the maintenance on there.
We do the operation and maintenance on behalf of the city.
And Pam is very happy about that.
Okay, I mean, I mean, check it out, I think it says that Oakland County is the owner, but, um, um. Verify that. Our, and then I guess we'll have to be changed if that's not the case, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional question? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have the twenty twenty three pavement resurfacing project recommendation of bid. Is there a rainbow or something? Thank you all for coming up.
You are.
Well, uh. Deputy Mayor Council, Taber Miller, Deputy Register, uh, for you tonight is, uh, our recommendation for a contract award. For the twenty twenty three pavement and surfacing project. Uh, February sixteen, we do, uh, a total of seven bid bonuses arranged from. Two point two nine million and some change, or two point three four one million and some change. Uh, the low bid was submitted by Allen Construction Company, uh, located in Princeton. Uh, in review of the paving bond issue. Uh, we piggybacked a bunch of other projects onto this, so, you know, we've identified all them costs. Uh, we take the total bid minus all the piggyback projects. Uh, the total amount to the paving bond issue was about one point seven nine seven million. In which, we're fairly confident we have about one point seven eight six million left in the bond issue, so we're really, really close. So. Uh, with that, there's, uh, three and a half miles that we surfacing, it's about fifteen different streets. You know, I've attached the bid tabs, I attached the map. Uh, that map shows a lot of work line. Some of it starting today or tomorrow will continue eventually.
Um, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make, I'll make a motion toward twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three pavement resurfacing program to ally construction. Uh, two million three hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty five cents.
Second.
It's, uh, been moved and seconded toward the twenty twenty three pavement resurfacing, uh, pro. Ally constructed company with an amount of two million three hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty five cents. Yes, I think I said everything, is there any discussion?
Yes. Everything that's on here in the. Medium gray, I guess, that's all promised. Resurfacing. Oh, thank you. Oh, no, I just want to make sure that we're covering all these roads for that price.
Yeah, that, that's what was included in the bid, uh, the, the darker blue ones.
Those are, yeah.
Yeah.
Medium blue, medium blue, okay.
Medium blue are the roads.
The roads, okay, because I thought when I was at the, um. Your meeting, yes, that we weren't gonna be, you're gonna add some to these possibly?
So I think what you're thinking of is, is so when, when we bid this out, we bid it out, and there were, there were three. Let me step out, in our last road recommendation for the last, for the twenty twenty three construction season, there were three. Let me step out, in our last road recommendation for the last, for the twenty twenty-three construction season, there were three roads that were designated as optional. Uh, should we have enough money? Because we had, over the first few years, we had, uh, budget surpluses. So we were, the idea was to put it towards those, those, the existing roads that were the twenty-two, twenty-two recommendation, plus those three optional roads. So this particular bid covers.
The three optional roads.
The three optional roads, and what we talked about in the study group, I think is what we're thinking about, is should we come up, should we see some unexpected high costs from, say, say we start looking at, uh, Red River and there's a requires additional work and we have to spend more money, then one of the things, we have two options at that point. We come to council and, or they come to council and we approve money to be taken out of the local road fund to cover that overage. Or alternatively, we can begin pulling those optional series off of the given.
And whi- which ones are the optional?
So the optional is, uh, north on, the north end of, of Bloomfield. Uh, Frank Brockway, right here next to the, uh, City Hall, and then I think it's California, right next to Panera, that, that's a small section right there that's horrible.
Which one?
It's right.
Is it on here now?
I think it's right here, oh no, that's Golden Gate, um.
California.
Yeah, California, right here. Yeah, exactly, I think, yeah, right.
So you would pull the, because I've been on all three of these streets, they're all kind of, they're all really bad.
Yeah, like I said, we're just, you know, just with the paving bond issue, it's ready to bug you tomorrow. We want to make sure we got something in our back pocket in case we run into a street that falls apart on us. And additional cost has to be encouraged to make them repairs.
Right, so we have two options to that, to that happen.
Well, could, because I'm looking at Eldorado, which was an add-on road because of the group that came here.
That's not part of the paid, but, I'm sorry, that's not part of the, 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 the village program. That's a separate S A D that, that's being covered by the cost, the cost of the government, the residents, as well as our share will be out of the local road fund.
So we're already pulling from the local road fund to do this?
Correct.
So would we pull from the local road fund to do these?
That could be an option, either that or not do those roads.
I think they need to be done.
Right, but, but they were, they were put in there as op- as optional, because again, it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly, you know, as you get into the third year, where the expenditures are going to show relative to the amount of roads that you have to put, so.
So are you saying we're voting on optional roads right now?
No, 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 the, the optional roads are included in, in, in the bid, the entire vet. So right now, assuming there, if there are no problems, all the roads plus the three optional roads are covered in spot. And then we have contingencies later on, so there's nothing come up.
Is this part of the optional too?
No.
So you're just talking that dinky little thing?
Yep, the dinky little thing. And then, uh, and then Frank Rockaway right next to us.
We wouldn't be able to cover these three?
It just depends on what we find, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, you can see, we're already about, about ten thousand dollars over on the bid. So that'll have to come out of the local road fund, but, but again, if we, if we have, you know, if we run into something major, then we have to make those decisions, that will be our job to make those decisions.
That's why you don't determine that it's under budget after the first year.
It was under budget after the first.
But it's a whole project and look at now, we don't have, have, uh, money to do things that really need to be done.
How do you figure? It's, it's the, the, the paving bid contractors, they, they, the prospect allied is bidding right in at what we, what we have estimated. So it's aligned.
Right, if nothing else comes up. Um, also I have a question, though, the, the bids were due on February sixteenth and San Diego is on there, but I don't, didn't infrastructure committee meet on March first and determine that they were going to do San Diego?
At the roads.
We're talking about the road, I'm talking about the, the water main, yeah, and, and I, on this bid is already water main trench repair for San Diego.
I, I, I did put it on, I wanted to make sure we got it before, I mean, if San Diego doesn't move forward, we won't do that, we won't have that.
And that trench repair is covered under the capital.
Well, I know, but if it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't discussed or determined till March first by the infrastructure committee, how was it even in there?
Uh, like I said, we wanted to skid it bit out, uh, we can always pull it, it's not a big issue.
No, I, I mean, I don't think we can afford to pull it, I think we need to be putting more money into water mains rather than less, so. Okay, so San Diego and Glenwood are getting water main replacement. Oh, and what's this little thing?
That's Bloomfield, there's a section of Bloomfield.
Just a little section, um, but they're not getting a road after they dig up the road for the water main? Or you don't have to dig up the road? Yeah, that's a long. So that's not being paved, that's just, just doing the water main. And is that section of Bloomfield then, will that be paved and included in repaving of all of that?
Yes, yes, and there's a water main section going along there too, it will be patched in.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
So you said it's going to be patched in, are you going to do the water main first or?
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next up is the gate well cleaning quote.
Uh, so, uh, for you tonight, we have, uh, a recommendation with that quote in between about ten ninety valves, eight wells. They're located in the city, the majority of them are located along the Southfield Road. Uh, so D P W, L L, or the Laker Policy has tried to get in these two man, like, the gate valve repairs or refurbishments, and they're, they're capable of dirt, it's a really all the way from the bottom of the gate well, all the way up to Public Center, they turned the, the valve on and off. Uh, last year, Laker Policy did clean one of them, that took them about eight hours, it was very tedious work. So we got a quote from D B M, we did your, your place by program, because they have a large backers, that you're able to back to that material out, uh, they quoted three hundred and seventy-five dollars each. And just in case there needs some traffic control, uh, they asked, uh, for thirteen hundred dollars a day to do traffic control on the Southfield Road. I personally don't think they need it, because these gate walls are way off the road, it should be able to work in the side streets. Uh, we did want to make sure we put that in the budget. So, uh, for you is, is a recommendation to, uh, approve their quote. About a total of twelve thousand hundred and seventy-five dollars, that would be in capital improvement bond, uh, paid out of that, because it's, it's relative to the gate walls.
So.
You need the motion?
Motion to approve the quote submitted by D V W Utilities in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, one hundred, twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for gate well cleaning and traffic control.
Okay, now it's going to move the ticket.
Okay, so for the traffic controls, would you be expressing that to them or, like, how, how is that figured into the project, if they don't need it? They don't get paid for it, okay, I just wanted to.
It's been communicated to them that you don't think they need it, or if you just haven't, okay. Any further questions?
I've just added that there's a safety issue too, so if you feel like something's really too far to Southfield Road, and then you can take a rain bow.
Will, will, like, um, the city be alerted about this or, okay? Okay, it'll be like in the morning, so we all know. Okay, um, and then is there, so do you think there's a way to keep up with these, or do you think this will be like something that in five years we'll have to come back and spend the same amount?
No, I mean, these, the Laker Policy ran, and you don't think these things are going to be years and years and years. But you always get, you know, there, there always flow of water.
I would imagine the ones on Southfield Road would, and the other ones would fill up quicker because they're closer, there's more debris.
And there's no way to, like, protect from debris or anything like that?
Yeah, it cost my life, you know, a lot of these, uh, these gate wells are brick.
How long has it been since they've actually break these? No, no, I mean, new ones now, but they don't. Sixty, probably seventy, they stopped using brick.
Yeah, probably.
So when you said that we need to be on a, the D P W needs to be on a program to flush hydrants and clean the gate valves, what's the ideal time for? How often, I should say?
Uh, every few is a little bit, for a lot of things, but once a year, I know some of them do it twice a year. I don't think Laidrop's ever really had a fashion program, and some of the concerns Southfield Player Department has expressed a little.
So, I guess my question is, I mean, I know it's considerably more, but is there a way for you to get a quote, so we can see what it looks like? I mean, to, to go the more expensive route, I'm not saying you have to, but.
We have two hundred and fifty of these.
No, I mean, just future thinking, that's all I'm.
I mean, you know, we've done a lot of that work with your, your sanitary holes back in the, I think it was the mid nineties, most of them went through a rehab program. Uh, where it's actually, you know, use a semitishous rail inside of them, the anvils and the rail of all that brick.
Alright.
And, and it's actually held pretty fairly well.
Thank you.
I just have a quick, how long do you think this, to, to do this particular project, what's the length of time do you anticipate?
Three days.
And then, when do you think it'd start? I mean, do they work in the winter?
Was that?
Would they wait till spring, or they could even start by the way? Oh, okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, we have a twenty twenty-three water main, uh, recommendation.
So, um, this, this came out of the, uh, infrastructure study group, um, just a little bit of background, the, you know, when, when the, um, project was approved by Civic City Council in December of twenty twenty, the three-year capital improvement bond project, it was a seven point three million dollar project, of which five point four million dollars was in general obligation bond, and one point nine million was, was expected to be used out of the, uh, four million dollar balance of the city water and sewer fund. So the, the, the good news is, is that the, the capital improvement bond has been, um, uh, dramatically under, under budget for a variety of reasons, you know, really five main reasons, one was, you know, at the time, um, when we put together the capital improvement bond, uh, it was, it was assumed that, that the water meters would need to be replaced, because that was the driving factor, because we couldn't find any other, other issue, um, associated with the water loss. So, um, as it turns out, we did find, uh, the, what we believe was the smoking gun over in the, the athletic fields that we've talked about before, um, so there was about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was associated with, um, uh, the water meters. Um, we also, uh, the second reason, we also, uh, have, uh, fewer lead lines than we expected for a city our age. That, that's going to save us about two hundred thousand dollars that we're estimating. Um, the gate valve, which we just talked a little bit about, uh, we had estimated that, I think we were doing a hundred and sixty-two of them as part of the project, and we estimated that half of those would be replacements, and half of those would be refurbishes, for refurbishments. To date, we've only done refurbishments, uh, so that's actually been good news, because the refurbishments are six times cheaper. Uh, that's about another three hundred thousand dollars. Fourth, uh, uh, reason is we've received significant grants of about three hundred thousand dollars. And then the other, uh, big reason, uh, for, for the surplus, um, is that, uh, when we had put together the, the, the approved recommendation, uh, Eagle's requirement was that every home in the city have a front, front lawn excavation to visually identify the waterline material going into and out of the stop box. Um, after we had approved the project, they had, uh, changed their, their guideline to, uh, doing a statistically balanced sample. And for our city, it was three hundred and fifteen, so, um, that reduction, uh, like saved us about seven hundred and two thousand dollars. So to date, we have not spent any money out of the water fund that we had, we had planned on doing, and we don't plan on you touching that one point nine million. So we're planning on essentially giving that back to the city, and the city in the future can then figure out, the city and this council, um, can figure out what they want to do with that money, but when you, when you compare the, uh, amounts that we've spent to the, uh, five point four million dollar bond that we, we took out, um, we are six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left after accounting for all the work that would be done through the end of this third, third year of the project. Um, so the, the, when the recommendation was made, we anticipated this as a possibility. We have an endless supply of, of, uh, uh, water projects as Council Miller, Councilmember Miller just, you know, noted about the water mains. So, um, the study group talked through possible uses for this six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And, and also I should note that the expectation for a general obligation bond, that the money is used up within three years, which will be this summer. Um, so all of our systems through this capital improvement bond have been significantly improved. The one area, though, that still has, uh, a long way to go is the, the water mains. Um, so the study group is recommending that, in addition to the water main replacements that are already slated for twenty twenty-three, that we add two water main projects to that, uh, to the summer of twenty twenty-three, uh, to the summer of twenty twenty-three project. Um, and those, uh, recommendations are San Diego from, uh, Rackham to Stanford Court, and then Lincoln, uh, underneath Southfield Road, so that'll improve, uh, fire, uh, flow and fire safety and redundancy to those areas. Um, Lincoln does require a little bit of background information on that one specifically. So about fifteen years ago, there was a water main break under Lincoln, and given the technology at the time, the only way to fix that would have been to dig up Southfield Road. And so at the time, the, the administration decided to shut off those gate valves, which prevented water from going from the east side of Lincoln over to the east side of Southfield Road, to the west side of Southfield Road, eliminating the redundancy and causing some of the, um, you know, reduced flow and pressure in, in that area. So now fifteen years later, there's technology that will allow us to repair that, be either a current pipe placing or directional boring, um, which, in which case, we won't have to dig up Southfield Road. And so if you add up the two costs for the San Diego, uh, option and the Lincoln option, and you, you, uh, add those together, it's about six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, we've got six hundred and seventy-five thousand left. So there are two different contingencies for that slight twelve thousand dollar overage. Um, one is that we do expect that a large majority of our gate valves in the twenty twenty-three project will still require refurbishment instead of replacement, so there should be significant contingency there. And if that doesn't happen, um, again, we, we can return, we're potentially returning one point nine million dollars to the water and sewer fund that we're not going to use as part of this project, so that twelve thousand dollars can easily be absorbed by the one point nine million.
Question, why don't we have eight hundred sixty thousand if we're not doing the water meter replacements?
Because a hundred, a hundred, well, we need a motion first, right?
Oh.
Yes, so, um, so I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, adopt the recommendation and instruct the city administrator to add these two water main projects to the twenty twenty-three capital improvement project.
There's second?
Second.
Where is the motion?
So thank you, um, to move in second, um, now.
Yeah, so, so to your question, um, there, there was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars budgeted for, for, um, water, water improvements.
Oh, water meter replacements.
Seven hundred and forty thousand of that was for water meter replacements, a hundred and twenty thousand of that was for uh, water to, water telemetry technology, and that's what we approved. Um, and the R F P was supposed to go out and hasn't done, so.
No.
Is that the thing that's going to lead?
Yes, yes.
That hasn't gone out yet? Any further questions?
So is this like a document that's subject to change at all, or you just?
Certainly, I mean, we're recommending that those two projects get added to the summer of twenty twenty three.
And is this, that, it's not on here, but is it right about here? Right at the corner.
So it's just, it's just underneath, it goes underneath the road. Underneath Southfield Road, we just got section underneath Southfield Road, there's a break underneath there. So that, so they shut the valve off over here, so the water's flowing that way.
Gotcha.
And so that'll increase redundancy, not only redundancy, but also flow to that whole area over there.
Good. Okay.
Any further questions?
Yeah. Yeah. Sure, if you're, yeah, so you can do that piece underneath Southfield.
Karen Nunn, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we will have the action from the labor attorney's recommendation. I will make a motion or, yeah, make a motion on that. Thank you, Steph.
Yes, so I'll, um, make a motion to deny the grievance filed by Glennis Thornhill because of, because denial of her application for promotion to deputy treasurer was not due to age discrimination and there was no violation of article nineteen point oh three of the city's personnel manual of employment regulation. The city council finds that the promotion of another candidate was based on legitimate business reasons. The administration's assessment that the successful applicant had more job-related experience for the deputy treasurer position than Mrs. Thornhill, Ms. Thornhill.
There's second?
Second.
Um, well, there's any discussion behind it, um, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And next we have the appointment to board of reviews. Um, I just realized that there's not really a introduction of it, it's just the application. So if somebody wants to introduce it.
I could probably introduce it. Um, we had a board of review member that's term was up and we're in need of replacing that board of member. And so you receive three applicants from, um, three different people and, um, I don't have their names in front of me, but, um, and, um, we asked that the mayor appoint one of those board of review members. I do have a board of review mem, um, meeting on Thursday, which we are going to be shortened for because, um, this is being, um, voted on so late. Uh, we were hoping it would be in February that this, um, new board of member is not going to be able to make it to the board of review. And we also have one of our others and we have three board of review members. So I'm only going to have one. So I'm going to have to call our assessor and find out what we need to do with that. So, but we do need to have somebody appointed. So we at least have two board members.
Do you not have an alternate?
Hmm.
Do you not have an alternate anymore?
No, we haven't had an alternate. Last alternate was Frank Brock and.
It's been a while, but.
And he, yeah, it was Frank Brock and his term ended. And we haven't had a, any applications come through that have been, uh, or they have been, um, I don't know how to.
So, um, for the, the item for tonight is to appoint, the recommendation is to appoint Yolanda Arnold to the board of review with the term expiring, so thirty one, twenty twenty six. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Yolanda Arnold to the board of review for the term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
There's second. The move in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, how, how is the decision made? Because we have three different applicants that look like they have a variety of experience. How, how is person chosen?
Um, it comes to me for a recommendation, I make the recommendation, the council, council approves it, organize.
I understand that, but how do you make your recommendations? What, what do you use to determine that?
By reading what they're, uh, what they fill out the application with. By the listing their relevant information regarding your past or present employment experience, memberships or personal experiences that they relate to you being qualified for the items checked above. Also list any other relevant information, including state search qualifications or serving on committee or board checked above. So I don't know that.
Okay, is there a ranking system or is there something that, what, what kind of experience is, is required for this position?
Well, this, this, this particular case, the, the, the recommended candidate has real estate experience and homeowners association experience. The, the other two candidates, their experience listed was being residents and college graduates.
Oh, okay, but, but, but that was a negative at one point about legacy appointments was, was an issue. So I'm just.
You mean by legacy appointments?
No, well, it was with planning commission, they were, uh, like effort to get rid of legacy appointments. And to bring different people on who hadn't been involved in other things apparently.
I have no idea of what you mean by that. So. Questions? Concerns? Karen Nunn, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
I was looking for the application, sorry.
Oh, go up to.
Oh. I got him, but I don't.
Yeah, they're going to be towards the front.
I found him, thank you.
Yes. It was Marvin Moore, Mike.
We're still in the middle of the. Vote.
So this one didn't have. Strategic planning experience? What, what's the term?
So we're still in the vote part, so we have to put, uh, up the that.
Oh, reason.
Since we're in the middle of a motion.
So the, the point for discussion has closed. I think if, if there's additional discussion, the, uh, if the motion fails, it can be
It can be re-introduced.
Could be additional discussions or, um, if the mayor wants, we could entertain an additional questions at this point, rather than going through that whole process.
The term that ends, um, in twenty twenty six.
I'm sorry, I was looking for the papers, I apologize.
And just maybe a little background.
I would like, yeah.
Is.
Yes.
Uh, so the board of review, when, when a property owner has a, receives their notice of assessment, they have the opportunity to, to challenge or contest what the county has assessed their property value at. So they would appear before this board or review, the board of view, review would hear their, their contention or their issues with their, their proposed assessment for this year. And then in conjunction with the county, uh, county equalization department, the agency assessing for the city will respond and make a determination for whether or not to grant the relief requested by the homeowner or deny that relief requested appearance at the, um, appearance before this board, uh, is, is a required step in, in order to be able to pursue a, appeal before the Michigan tax server. You have to go to the board of review first uh, in order to be able to pursue that if you're a residential property. So, so it's a, uh, an individual that's going to, your ideal candidate is going to be someone that familiar, uh, with real estate, maybe have some information or, or background on equalization or value, valuation, valuation of property. But really primarily they're going to rely upon that assessor, uh, that sits in with them on that and making that determination. It's not a, it's not an emotional based appeal. It's, there has to be some sort of, um, I'll use it.
Substantial.
Yeah, well, or, you know, if your property was, was, don't, was, uh, you don't for residential, but it was assessed as industrial or commercial or something, uh, an error along those lines, then that could be corrected.
Or the cap was taken off the property and shouldn't be taken off.
Correct.
Um, it also, they do hear hardship cases too, or poverty cases.
And there, there are standards and thresholds for the, for the hardship.
Yep.
That if the individual provides, you know, demonstrates a financial need or financial difficulty, they are qualified based on those standards. That's the role of the board review.
And how often do they meet?
Once a year.
Oh, that's.
Three days.
Now, they be two days in March, once, one in July and one in December.
Before.
But, um, the March boards are to, they're a full day. So you have from eight, so five during the day and then you have an afternoon session till nine o'clock at night. So. And the first one is this Thursday and the next one is the following Thursday. So.
So, so they will be at the meeting on Thursday.
Correct. But I don't know if we're going to have enough, uh, enough people or board members for Thursday. So we'll have to see if they're going to have to push to another day.
How many people are in that board?
Three, three. And we have a quorum with two.
Any other question?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. You will follow still with, uh, you, councilwoman.
Oh, you got to me already?
Yep.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes. I never got the vote.
We're approaching, I think.
Yeah.
Next, the city administrator report, do you have anything from?
I just have one thing from our, um, code enforcement officer. Um, he just wanted to let everybody know that Fontana is done for today, but they will be back out each day until they have gone through the city once, chipping and hauling per their contract. Uh, Big Dave's is done for the day. They have been working, getting the hazardous branches and fallen trees taken care of first. In some cases, they only did cuts to remove the hazardous and clear sidewalks and streets. They will be back out tomorrow and continue so until the city is complete. They will haul out anything that Fontana does not, it does not. There will be no yard waste bags being picked up until April third. All bags or cans that have yard waste must be pulled back from the street until the, until that time. We have multiple trees and branches down throughout the city because of the storms and they, uh, we are asking, um, the residents to please be patient as we do the cleanup for this. And that's the only thing I have. And then, um, we also, the city administrator did send out today to everybody the follow-up to the question we had at our last meeting. And, um, we are knocking those off as soon as we can, or as soon as we can get a hold of some of the people. Some of them, we did not have phone numbers for to be able to call them. So, um, we have had people knocking on the doors to talk about, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
Um, infrastructure study group.
Uh, yeah, so obviously we, uh, the, the, the group met to, uh, put together the recommendation that was approved, uh, to, or adopted tonight, uh, by council. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention from, from that meeting, because it's, it's just continued good news, is that our, our water loss rate is at three percent for this past month. So that's now three months in a row. Uh, where we've been three percent or less. So again, uh, continuing to keep our fingers crossed that the smoking gun, uh, that we were looking for has been found and, and hopefully our water loss rates will, will be at, at a low rate from here on forward.
That's it?
Yep.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Committee. I want to, uh, jump in here, um, uh, Barb is going to, uh, it's putting, we are having breakfast with breakfast and, or no, or.
Lunch.
Breakfast with the, I keep saying breakfast with the bunny or lunch.
Brunch.
We're going to have brunch with the bunny. Uh, we are, or Barb is now, go ahead.
Yes, so we're, we're going to try for, um, March twenty fifth. Or what was the second date?
April.
April second, which is a Sunday. Right?
Yes.
That, so we're going to try for one of those two dates. We are definitely going to go ahead with it. We just have to find, um, which, um, which is going to work best for the committee for cleanup and which will be attracting more children. That's what we really want. So it's going to be three twenty five or, and we'll have that date out. It'll, it'll be posted as soon as possible, as soon as we.
Really know that by this evening, Sharon.
Oh, should we?
Um, well.
I have to wait for the person that I need to talk to.
The whole problem with the twenty fifth is because there is another event that happens like two hours after the, out the time of the breakfast with the bunny. We just have to make sure that we are able to.
Turn the room around for our next event. And I think that's doable because they leave to go out in the back and look for eggs. So it's actually, we'd even be out of the room sooner than that, right? Possibly.
If we make sure it's over, well, after they go out.
Yeah, it's one way.
Yeah.
Um, and then we do have another bingo coming up on March sixteenth. It's going to be a Saint Patrick's Eve. We're going to do a potluck. So we will provide corned beef and then we ask, uh, residents to bring a dish to pass. They can sign up. And then we'll do a Saint Patrick's Day bingo.
What time?
That's, oh, I'm sorry, uh, what have we been doing? Six to eight?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, six to eight, six to eight P M. But this will be Thursday, not Friday for March.
So, oh, because now you don't want to, I get it.
Yes, I don't, I think people want to do their own thing on Saint Patrick's Day.
Sure.
And then we're hoping we do have one, um, activity per month. And I'm hoping other council members, if you want to take a night and tell me what you want to do, I'll be happy to help you run with it.
Absolutely.
And then we'll put those dates out.
Alrighty.
Yeah, thanks for doing all this.
Yeah, thank you. Um, planning commission.
Yeah, so at our, our last meeting, um, planning commission adopted updated rubbish standards. Um, basically there were two things that were done. One is that we changed the zoning language. Um, that says the, the key word from shell to may with respect to having a, uh, requiring a, um, a fire safe room, uh, to store trash. Um, so that, that's now optional instead of a requirement. And then in addition, um, with respect to, uh, garbage cans that are used by the businesses, um, we, we added that they needed to be covered and that they needed to be out of public view, stored out of public view. And that was it.
Thank you. Some card.
Question, did you do anything about the recycling?
No, there wouldn't, perhaps the recycling.
That'll be, that will be on the, kind of, council to officially, uh, right, on the, the meeting on. Thank you. Some card, um.
No report.
I'm reading some card, I'm saying it, but anyway. Southfield Public Schools.
Uh, Dave, uh, Southfield Public Schools has launched their celebrity readers program and they have, uh, opportunities where you can actually go online and, um, register to read and that kind of thing. So it looks like kind of a cool way to do it. And I think it's expanding beyond, beyond just the month of, um, whatever, reading month. Um, so anyway, um, people have been invited, but I would imagine that if you're interested in volunteering, that you can also reach out and, um, you know, sign up to, to read in one of the classrooms in one of the district buildings.
After finishing signing up, I was invited. Taking a day.
Thank you, um. Sacra, Sacua minutes, I'm assuming that's going to be from soon, so.
They're in the pack.
They're in the packet. Yeah. No, I mean, the hot.
Oh.
Correct. Okay.
She both.
So, um, for unfinished and new business, um, I asked, um, the city manager to put the communications plan in the package. So one that stays in front of us, but my, my idea was to kind of start drafting something because I think that what we need, especially from, um, the storms that just happened, we need to have like a call three or some type of, um, emergency plan that's written out, that's clear for all the residents, you know, to know how this works or how, you know, what happens during the storm. So anyways, just saying all that, if, at, at some point, I'm hoping that we as a council can also start, um, thinking about after looking at these examples, thinking about a communications plan, um, that we can kind of talk about maybe in the study session or something, because we definitely need to start drafting one. So that's why it's in there just for your review. Next, we, um, publicly. Next, we, public comment, anyone wants to talk about any, anything that's on your mind for approximately three minutes? Anyone online or in the audience, three minutes? I don't see any hands, so I will close the public comment, and we will go to mayor and council comments. Breakfast with the bunnies and do that. Um, one, I really wanna thank DPW for their hard work during the storm, they did majorly overtime um, for actually both storms, and so I, I wanna make sure that if you see them out, maybe thumbs up, I do have a question, I did send some photos over to Sue because there are city trees that I drove around after the storms to see what trees that we need to take care of, and there's some trees that's hanging over like the roads, which is like if the next storm comes through, it's gonna be in the middle of the road, so tree program.
That is actually, I would send that list to Phil Diamond of Enforcement, he is working, I know he went went out today and was driving around with nothing, tree damage, first city treatment, everything really, I know he was here uh, yesterday as well, and he is working through making, you know, making sure he's got all of those identified, some shit that we're gonna help him out. Um, he and I have talked about moving forward the tree program, so I, I'm hoping we'll have, they'll have something to capitalize to through inspiration.
And he's also working with Dave's Tree Service to get, pick up the trees for the city properties.
I mean, it's, it's not a, the emergency, what I'm saying, but some of the trees that I saw, like, there's a big one that's hanging over Santa Barbara, and it seems like it's getting lower and lower, and it's, it's a nice size, so.
Well, yes. Yes.
My guess is that, that really probably, but I'm sure.
It's not, it's just where you you stop and look at it, it's like, you know, maybe two good storms come through, maybe the days we turn back.
There's a lot more southern trees, gonna jump in here, so I, I've talked to a few residents recently, and one, one idea that, that surfaced, given that we're a tree city and we have a ton of problems with trees, and you know, if you ever go on villagers with a village voice, you know, there's always, you know, who can I get to, to, you know, cut this tree or trim this tree or take care of this issue? One thing that we floated is, as a possible idea, is, is there any way that the city might be able to arrange for some type of con, you know, group discount for the city so that any residents who has a tree issue can call that preferred vendor and get a discounted rate towards, towards their, kind of similar to what we've done with the uh, the, the water lines and sewer lines, you know, the home, home lines where we have a, you know, insurance that we kind of partnered with. It's a little bit different, but just wondering if there's any way that we can do something like that to help the residents get a discounted rate to maintain their trees so that we don't have these, these issues all the time, or less of these issues.
I, I know I'm, the question from, from, a similar task to the, about, you know, for residents to purchase trees, I haven't heard of a program quite like that where you well, certainly chit chat with, with Bill about it, I mean, it sounds like a, a great idea, because I mean, you know, we've all had issues with, with trees in our homes and there is, it's like a contract, you know, you don't know, so, I, you know, to be able to have, you know, a solid contract so that you can live on for good rates.
Yeah.
I'll have a look, but DPW, um, what if he's ever heard of a program like this, or you know, how we can get started?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would think if I was a tree vendor, this, that would be a really great thing to have a contract like that, and maybe we could put out an RFP and have multiple, you know, vendors apply and whichever one provides the greatest discount for, you know, uh, à la carte, you know, type of service, list of services, you know, we go with that particular vendor, and that way it's fair.
Are you, I know Roger Lynn has been working on these things for a couple of years, are you including him in this? I know there were only two people on the tree committee, so.
I wasn't finding new names, but yeah, Roger's who I've been talking to about, about getting started, Roger and Perry, so yeah. Um, certainly I, I've been chatting with, chatting with Roger on a, on a pretty fairly regular basis on, on the tree project, but.
Because there was a program through the county, I believe, has, anything happened with that?
There's no county program, I'm aware of, I mean, it may have been something that happened before, you know, Roger and I had talked about.
No, something that was supposed to be happening in April, there was gonna be a discount to that, it was, it was put out, I'll, I'll find some more info on it.
I'm not aware of that particular program, but that I'm certainly, one, one put a cast by county, right?
Um, and then the, go ahead, you have something else about trees?
I had a question, do you know, I've seen a lot of residents with their, like, their personal trees that have, you know, fallen down, do you know, like, Bill's been going out to, like, at least check on them and see if they have, you know, like, you know, maybe somebody's elderly or something, and.
I, I know the village had conversations with some residents about trees that are falling, um, you know, private trees. Um, I don't know if he's actively going out and, and seeking those conversations or seeing, you know, like, he notices that, I don't know if he's necessarily going and having those conversations, I think we've had a few conversations with residents who called or stopped by. Um, but I think right now his primary focus is on.
We'll see.
Streets.
And do we have any resources available for people who aren't able to pay for that kind of thing?
I don't have any personal resources, but I, again, I don't know. I don't know if Bill's got any information, if he's providing, I I, I don't necessarily think so, but I haven't been too involved in that particular kind of things.
Okay.
And if anybody, any residents have logs that they're looking to get rid of, back by the gazebo, the, the, the city is looking for as much firewood as we can get, uh, that, that way. Yeah, within reason, within reason.
Um.
Just, it, the Oakland Conservation District, that's who does the annual tree sales, you could order them through Oakland Conservation District. They generally offer bulk, like seedlings at a discount, or you can buy, I've bought them.
Oh, but they're little, they have the big tree.
Yeah, no, they're, you've gotten slightly larger ones, but they're, they're usually, you save most of the money to buy small ones. It's the end of April every year, they do it, you can pre-order them and then you pick them up.
Like bigger than this?
I mean, like, I bought, like, two hundred and fifty, I think, pine trees, it might have been about that big, so. A little bit bigger than, actually, some of them, this is about ten years, they're over ten.
Yeah, that once they root, there you go. I just have a quick, are any of our residents still without power, do we know?
Yes.
Oh, there are.
There were some people the last that I looked.
And where would they be, just scattered, or is there one block where they're still out, or?
That part, I don't.
Okay.
Um, but I will say that if, I saw some, some things on the villager, if you have lines now that you're concerned about sending your address, and I could see what I can do about getting somebody out there as soon as possible. And then for me, the last thing for my part.
You know, the real hijack.
Yeah, I know, so, um, is that we had really a great, I thought it was a good conversation when we had uh, at Jagged Fork with the South Open's Mayor's Association, and so we decided to expand it for the community, so we have a diversity, inclusion event that is going to be here Wednesday at six P M. in the, in the in the community room. Um, and we're working on it, uh, whether or not it'll be, uh, recorded or streamed on, streamed on Facebook, I don't wanna be yelled at from the guy in the sky, so we'll see what happens. So that is, the guy in the sky is Joe, not your guy up there, but, so, um, that's all that I have for my notes. Anyone else? You, council? Questions, concerns, I mean.
Well, I'll go. You go. Um, so I, I don't have much to say, but I did wanna say thank you to Barb. Uh, she's been doing a great job with putting on the events in the city. I wanted to say thank you Kelly for all of your updates for when the power went out. Thank you to your, you know, your contacts and everything. Um, and then also, I just wanted to thank the residents who came out to my.
Office hours?
Office hours, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, we had a great conversation and we are working on your concerns and thank you, that's all.
Oh, I can hijack this now, something happened on the, Susan. Um, hijacking yours, if there's another council person ready to do their office hours, so please tell the city manager. That'll be next month, right? It'll be.
You're trying to do one a month?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wait, are you saying someone is ready, or are you saying?
If, if.
Yep.
If somebody is ready. Which I gotta look at my schedule, but, anyway, I'm sorry, go back, I didn't wanna hijack your time.
Oh, no, that's all I have, thank you, and hopefully everyone's power comes back on, um, soon. That's all I.
Anyone else? Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, I feel bad for all the residents that have, had lost power, I'm assuming there are gonna be a lot of consequences from all the things that happened, some people were out for, I mean, I was out for four days, a lot of people were out for longer, some are still out, so if there's anything that we can do as a city to offer resources in any way to help with, you know, whatever unforeseen consequences people might be facing, I think that would be great, and also, I know there were conversations with D T E in the past, I think that there needs to be some kind of conversation with them, again, they spent a lot of time trimming trees in the last year or two here, and this was one of the worst things that we've ever had, so I don't understand, you know, I don't, I don't think it's the tree trimming that is impacting this, so I think we, we need to have some kind of conversation to see what's going on in Lathrop with our, with our electricity, I know it impacted a lot of people across the state, but like I said, they have spent a lot of time here supposedly making a difference, and it has not, so. You think that's it?
No.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to check in and see if, if, if there've been any moving forward at all with the encroachment discussion, and we just, I just wanna make sure that that's staying alive, I know we were kinda waiting for Bill to get up to speed a little bit.
Bill and I have been working on, um, we've, we've been working through that together, making sure that he's getting the, the guidance and training he needs, um, you're just in general state, but that is something that we, he and I have started talking about. Uh, we started very, you know, kinda as we're out in field doing things, identifying your.
Keeping a database.
Said, you know, we're trying to start in our own little pile, if you will, of, of, of properties and, and, and so there is, and then to talk about, so, I'm still a little ways out from, you know, the brain information, and we really wanna have a good amount of data and information collected, um, so that we'll learn you know, coming for council to talk about, and they wanna do discussions, so, um, not, definitely not a, a dive conversation, there's quite a bit of information I gather.
Okay, Scott, is there any, um, update on the, uh, switch from the uh, closed session?
I have not heard anything from the attorney general's office.
Okay.
All right, and then just the last thing, um, at our last meetings, both in the study session and in the, um, uh, council meeting, there were some figures thrown out, and I, I knew that they were not correct, and I didn't wanna say anything until I had the, the particular numbers, so there were, there were talks about, you know, one, one point seven million dollars of, of, um, engineering fees for Gibleton Webster. And went back and looked, and, and that was a pretty big inflation, it's, it's just a little over, and this is with respect to the, the two, uh, three year projects that we have going on. Uh, their engineering fees are about one million dollars, they're actually um, thirteen, almost fourteen percent under budget on their, their engineering fees, and when we look at it as a percentage of the total project, um, it's about nine point four percent of the overall spend. M dot looks at, at fifteen to twenty five percent of engineering fees for their projects, industry standards are about five to seven percent for design and ten to fifteen percent for constructions, that's a total of fifteen to twenty two percent, so again, below that, and, and if you look online uh, for, for guidelines, the, the most conservative estimates that I could find were under fifteen percent, and we are well under fifteen percent, so for Gibleton, just wanted to correct that number and, and, you know, Gibleton Webster is doing the job of managing the engineering fees for uh, these two very large projects.
Well, I do need to respond to that because that's something I asked for in the, um, infrastructure FOIA that I filed back in March of twenty twenty two, and I never received it, so I actually went through the check registers and added up what we have paid to Gibleton Webster, and that was for a two-year period, and it was one point seven million, so.
But that would.
That's where that big amount came from.
But that, that wouldn't be for those, the, the two projects, that would be.
Well, it was pretty close.
All projects that we do with Gibleton, including planning commission.
Well, right, but that's not, that's not a whole, that's not a whole lot in the, in the big schema thing, so again, if, if I had received the information that I asked for, you know, I wouldn't have had to estimate or spend all that time going through each check that was written, so.
That's all I have.
All right, well, then I will take the motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, second.
To adjourn, have a great night.